Good evening and welcome to the planning board for Thursday, January 5th, 2022. Happy New Year, everyone. The first matter on the agenda this evening will be the approval for November 21st, 2022, meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections or comments on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't at the meeting, so I just wanted to say I won't be voting on the minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion made by Mr. Fichette. I will second the motion. And I know we have Mr. Lockhart on Zoom. Mr. Lockhart, you voted to approve the minute? Mitch? Is he with us?
Is he on Dylan? I know you said he's signed in.
I think he may be muted.
I think he's on mute. Yep. Is he off mute now? I think he's off mute now.
He's off mute now, too. Mr. Lockhart, we just had a motion to approve the minutes for November 21st. Are you voting in favor of the approval of the minutes? Rich? Is he with us? Oh, there he is. Okay. Hi, Richard. Is he hearing us? No? Richard, can you hear us? Richard?
I'm here.
We just had a motion to approve the minutes for November 21st. Are you voting in favor of the approval of the minutes? Rich? Is he with us? Oh, there he is. Okay. Hi, Richard? Is he hearing us? No? Richard, can you hear us? Richard?
I'm here.
We just had a motion to approve the minutes for November 21st. Are you in favor of that motion?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. So we have three in favor to approve the minutes from November 21st. Okay, moving along on the agenda. We also have the approval of the minutes for December 5th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, like Sinead for the November meeting, I was not present for the December 5th meeting.
Okay. Anybody have any corrections or comments on December 5th? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the December 5th minute.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Lockhart, you in favor?
I was at the meeting.
Okay. So the minutes are approved. Thank you. So moving along, we have a continued business, a site plan review and special permit for 35 Varnum Ave. House of Hope Inc. has applied to the planning board seeking site plan review and special permit to construct an eight-unit apartment building at 35 Varnum Ave. The property is located in a traditional, single-family zoning district. The project requires planning board approval for site plan review and, excuse me, under Section 11.4, and a special permit to extend the existing non-conforming use under Section 4.52. We opened the meeting back in October 3rd. At that point in time, we did receive information from the applicant, and we did have two letters in favor that I read into the record. One was from the Coalition for a Better Acre that is into the record, and the other one is from Community Teamwork. So we put those into the record, and those were in favor. Then in October, we continued the matter to November. At that time, the applicant wanted more time to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we continued until December. And then from December, it was no testimony, and the matter continued to this evening. At this point in time, may we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lynn, members of the board. My name is Deb Chasse, and I'm the Executive Director at House of Hope, and I live 10 Dayton Street in Lowell. House of Hope is before you again, seeking site plan approval, a permit to extend the existing non-conforming use, and a special permit to extend a non-conforming structure. These requests offer property that House of Hope owns at 35 Varnum Avenue. This property was acquired in 2009 and provides emergency shelter for seven families. Since 2009, we have operated the shelter without complaint. Given the dire need for housing, especially housing for our poorest neighbors, and an invitation from the Commonwealth to apply for funding, we assembled a development team and determined that there was ample area in our backyard to create eight apartments for homeless families. DHCD's timeline was unusually brisk, and our desire to house eight more families was intense, too intense in hindsight, as I made some process mistakes early on, resulting in the need to slow things down and reexamine the initial design. I think we have some slides. If you could move to the next one. Relaxing the process and timeline meant we could not submit a completed application to the state, but I am delighted to report that it has resulted in an improved design that better links the service needs of both families in shelter to the positive outcomes of formerly homeless families who will be permanently housed while also responding to neighborhood concerns. The new design calls for adding on to and connecting our existing building that is staffed 24/7. The connection will consist of a shared education service space, enabling enhanced programming like a computer lab and tutoring space, volunteers to mentor and teach both adults and children, and other sorely needed supports. This improved design will remind rent-paying tenants of their struggle while homeless and model to shelter residents that permanent housing stability is possible and that support from House of Hope does not end. This improved design is a direct result of hearing our neighbors' concerns about dumpster location, access to Clinton Avenue, building layout, improved border fencing, and landscape design. You will hear more details about these changes from my team. These changes were presented to the ZBA on November 28th, and the needed variances were approved with the condition that House of Hope restricts vehicular and pedestrian access to and from Clinton Avenue, and that we reinforce this restriction with signage. You are aware that House of Hope has developed and operates multiple buildings in Lowell that serve both the emergency shelter needs and permanent needs of homeless families. In all, 58 families are sheltered and 39 families are permanently housed. We look forward to the day when we are before you again, seeking to transform all of our shelters into permanent housing. But until that day, we will continue, one small project at a time, to end homelessness for Lowell families. We vow to continue to be good neighbors and responsible taxpaying partners with the city. We are and will always be available for constructive dialogue and discussions, and we continue to serve homeless families in Lowell while being good neighbors and responsible partners to the city of Lowell. The project team's attorney, Jacob Taylor, will now review for the board and the public more detail of House of Hope's revised proposal and the specific requests that we are making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for again taking the time to hear from us. As Debbman indicated, we've made some significant changes to this project in response to feedback received from the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, and the neighbors, and we're now proposing to construct the new structure as an addition to the existing building on the site rather than as a freestanding building. I'll first speak briefly to these changes and why these are beneficial to the project and the neighborhood, and I'll then address why we meet the criteria for the requested relief. After concerns were raised regarding congestion on Clinton Avenue and the potential for House of Hope's residents to use Clinton Avenue to access Mammoth Road, House of Hope agreed to remove their proposed pedestrian gate so that there'll be no impact on Clinton Avenue in terms of pedestrian or vehicular traffic or parking. Clinton Avenue will not be accessible from our site. After prior meetings, House of Hope also agreed to move the proposed dumpster to the other side of the property and to maintain privacy fencing so as to address concerns regarding privacy and headlights. Since the last planning board meeting, the House of Hope team did some additional thinking about potential improvements, and this resulted in our modified proposal. We think that this results in a proposed project that is significantly better for everyone. Building the new structure as an addition rather than a freestanding building will allow us to move it further forwards towards Varnum Avenue and further away from the Clinton Avenue neighbors. New addition is smaller in volume than the prior proposal, and we have done away with some of the dormers. This allows us to locate our outdoor top lot further from the homes on Clinton Avenue. We've added even more trees along the northern and western property lines to provide screening and address privacy concerns. This revised site layout also benefit House of Hope's mission by providing an opportunity to better integrate the proposed educational and programming space to serve both the residents of the existing shelter facility and the new addition alike. Can you change the next slide, please? Additionally, this change also results in us no longer needing a special permit from the planning board under Section 6.7.2 of the ordinance for maximum driveway distance. And that's because the driveway distance is measured to the closest part of the building, and now that we're talking about one building, we're under the 200-foot maximum amount. The relief that we do need is as follows: site plan approval pursuant to Section 11.4 of the zoning ordinance, a special permit under Section 4.5.2 to extend and modify the existing non-conforming use, and a special permit under Section 4.5.3 to extend a non-conforming structure. And with respect to that latter item of relief, I'll note that the ZBA has granted all the variances needed to cover the deviations from the dimensional requirements that we're proposing, but my understanding is that we still also need the special permit from the planning board since we are proposing now to extend the existing structure. I'll now speak briefly to the criteria for site plan approval and for the requested special permits. Can you change the next slide, please? We are planning to maintain a number of mature trees on the site, including a number of very large existing trees on the southerly side of the site. Removal of mature trees will be minimized, and approximately 26 new trees will be planted. In addition, no stone walls or similar structures will be disturbed, and the project has been designed to incorporate stormwater infiltration systems that will not increase stormwater runoff from the site. Layout has been designed with pedestrian and vehicular safety in mind. The top lot area will be enclosed, and we're providing ample space for vehicles to turn around at the rear of the site. Our turnaround area can accommodate the city's largest fire trucks. There'll be no obstruction of scenic views, and the existing facade of the current building will be maintained, and new landscaping improvements will be added to complement the street scape along Varnum Avenue. Visual intrusion will be minimized based on the proposed location of the new addition, and the parking and trash storage areas will be effectively screened. We've also agreed to minimize any intrusion from headlights via the installation of a new six-foot-high privacy fence along Clinton Avenue and along that side of the site. And in addition, lighting on the site will be designed to avoid any spill over. As Cliff Bomer from Davis Square Architects will illustrate, given the grade, the size of the lot, and the proposed location of the addition, it will be compatible with the character and scale of the other buildings in the vicinity as viewed from the surrounding public ways. The new addition will utilize similar building materials to the surrounding structures. The addition will also step down in scale in the area nearest to the smaller structures on Clinton Avenue. We've recently incorporated additional changes to further reduce the volume of the proposed addition and to increase the distance between the structure and Clinton Avenue. The new infiltration system will prevent any increase in stormwater runoff. Pervious paving materials are being used wherever possible, and wastewater will tie into the city sewers. There'll be no adverse effects associated with hazardous substances or materials, and the site design provides for adequate access to both the existing structure and the addition, including emergency access and trash removal. The stormwater system will meet or exceed all applicable requirements, and the planned layout conforms to the screening, landscaping, and the parking layout requirements of the zoning ordinance. And I would again ask the board to note the location and the number of the trees that we're now proposing on the plan. With respect to the criteria under Section 4.5.2 and 4.5.3 for the extension of the nonconformities, note that the project has been carefully designed to minimize any adverse effects on the neighborhood, and, as I previously noted, House Hope has responded to community concerns and further improved the project by relocating the proposed dumpster, eliminating the proposed gate connecting to Clinton Avenue, and moving the massing of the new structure further away from Clinton Avenue. Finally, I want to again reiterate that this project will provide important benefits to the community by providing affordable housing for eight formerly homeless families. These units are desperately needed, and this project furthers core priorities identified in the Lowell Comprehensive Master Plan, including the following: building and maintaining a diversity of housing options throughout the city so as to support economic vitality and meet the evolving needs of residents; maintaining a distribution of affordable housing throughout the neighborhoods; supporting and promoting programs that rapidly rehouse individuals or families who are currently homeless; maintaining and strengthening the city's partnerships with nonprofit providers serving homeless and at-risk homeless clients; and growing the city's tax base. The proposed project will advance all of these objectives. I'll now ask Cliff Bomer from Davis Square Architects to provide more detail on our site layout and design changes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cliff Bomer. I'm an architect at Davis Square Architects in Somerville, and thanks again for hearing us at our second time that we're in front of you folks. Let's stay on this slide for a moment. This one that is spent on your screen a little bit is a graphic depiction of what Jacob has been describing as far as changes to the development. I think you can see, I won't repeat every single thing that he did say, but they are keyed there, pointing out the changes along Clinton blocking access, Clinton moving the dumpster, moving the addition closer to where, to the existing facility versus the freestanding building, converting the, what is now a basketball court into a tot lot and moving it further away from the neighbors. And I think that one point I would make is that the extension of the non-conforming use, I'm the architect, I'm not the attorney, but to me, there are some obvious advantages or betterments that are being made in the as-built conditions in Clinton. I just want to emphasize, so there's a little bit of these points, there's a little bit of overlap with what Jacob talked about, but, for example, the existing site has no stormwater management system, so that's an entirely new piece. I just mentioned the noise mitigation, replacing a basketball court with a tot lot. The location and maneuverability of the driveway actually does allow emergency vehicles to come deep into the site that are of benefit to certainly to House of Hope, but potentially also the neighbors. Improved fence design from what is currently there. We're improving the parking, existing parking spaces that are on the site, and we're also adding a lot of landscaping right now. You didn't see that slide at the very, very beginning, but the front yard out on Varnum is rather barren right now, and we are planting a number of trees and improving the landscape along Varnum, so improving the view of the existing development on Varnum, from Varnum. We could move to the next slide. You'll see the massing that Jacob mentioned, that we have diminished the massing of the building in addition to moving it closer. You can see that the connector piece now is the community space that was an attachment onto the separate building closest to the neighbors. There was a small one-story piece, that's where the community room was, and what we've done is relocated that to create a connector piece. It certainly works better from a programming perspective, but also has the advantages of cutting down on the scale of the new construction. You can also see from this massing diagram that the new version, the newer version, we've lowered the roof significantly on the one leg of the building, we've diminished, we've gotten rid of dormers, and overall have really cut down on the cubic footage of the building in response to a lot of the feedback we got. It also, of course, helps our construction costs, which are important in the affordable housing world. The next slide is also a little bit more about impact. The left-hand view is our previous scheme when you're on Clinton Street. This is right off of Google Earth Views, and we superimpose a view of the new building on the left, and you can see on the right hand, well, you can't see on the right hand because you can't see the building anymore. The building in its new location is no longer visible from this perspective on Clinton Avenue. The next slide, please. What I want to do here is talk a little bit about the pattern of development and existing fabric, this kind of backing up a bit of why this site appeared to us to be very developable without a big departure from existing fabric. If you look at the diagram on the left, our site is the gray site adjacent to two other largish, blue-colored sites. And, you know, one thing from doing the research, just within 500 feet of our development, all of those shaded buildings, the blue ones are all two-family homes, and there are other nearby developments that have significantly more than one unit in them. And we didn't look at all of the traditional, single-family district, but given what's already existing there, we don't feel it's a very big departure at all from existing nearby fabric. I think the next slide also shows is another way of kind of making that same point. Our site is an unusual site. All of the sites combined that have their access exclusively to Clinton add up to 22,500 square feet. Our site with its current use is almost 34,000 square feet. So in any case, I think our main point is, for us, it was important that what we designed made sense, not just programmatically, but also from a neighborhood scale. At this point, unless you have specific architectural questions, I'd like to turn it over to our civil engineer, who will cover a number of more technical issues associated with the site design. This is Jim DeVellis from DeVellis Serene.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Cliff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, as Cliff said, my name is Jim DeVellis. I'm a professional civil engineer with DeVellis Serene, and we are providing civil engineering and landscape architecture to the Hope House. Again, as Cliff said, I'll try not to be repetitive to some of the topics covered because there is some overlap, but if you recall, I did give a full presentation at the earlier meeting of items such as layout materials, grading, drainage, utilities. We gave it a second round of engineering to accommodate some of the comments that we got from the zoning board, certainly from the planning board and the neighbors on Clinton. They were discussing as adding, pretty much doubling up the landscape along the Clinton Ave area, adding the full fence versus chain link, so you can't see through it. We moved the dumpster, so all of those engineering changes are reflected in the updated plans. We did have correspondence with the city. We provided a turning radius or a SWIP plan that shows the largest fire truck in Lowell. I think it's E1, Cycle 2, it's 45 feet. It can go through the site turnaround and come back without any impact. Provided a lighting plan that shows low levels of light throughout the site, certainly none spilling over onto any of the properties, all dark sky compliant. So, you know, from the changes that we made, even from the original, we tried to keep everything separate from Clinton Ave, such as there's a separate water, a water line that does not come through Clinton Ave, the sewer does not come through Clinton Ave, the drainage, as Cliff had said, there's no drainage out there other than sheet flow. So we did geotechnical studies. We're showing that you're going down 20 feet of sand and gravel, we're putting an infiltration system, plenty of opportunity to overdetain, which we're doing. So water sewer, gas, electric, everything is coming from the front and not from Clinton. So again, I don't want to be too repetitive, but I'm here if you have any questions on any of the details from the civil and landscape.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else on behalf of the applicant? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Karen Frederick. I'm the CEO of Community Teamwork. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in strong support of the House of Hope's Varnum Avenue project. These units are desperately needed to support families moving out of homelessness. We're hearing a lot of talk about homelessness from Governor Sununu calling on the federal government to help with the New Hampshire crisis, to former Governor Baker informing the legislature on one of his last days in office that the family homelessness system in Massachusetts is full and will be out of funds by March. I also hear we don't know what the solution is to this problem, but we do know. National experts have been here in Lowell to tell us that the answer is to produce more housing, and communities that have followed this advice are not experiencing the level of crisis in homelessness that we are here in Massachusetts today. Production of housing has been way behind the demand for housing for years, and the production of very low-income, housing for very low-income families and individuals has been even further below the need. For this kind of housing, they're really, the House of Hope, Community Teamwork, and the Coalition for the Better Acre are really the only folks in the area who do develop housing for very low-income families. Like the House of Hope, Community Teamwork operates family shelters. We're seeing longer and longer shelter stays as there is no affordable housing for families to move to. The Commonwealth is back to placing people in motels as shelter beds remain full for so long. Community Teamwork is providing operational services at one of these motels in Methuen for close to 100 families. This is no way for families to live. Developing supportive housing is not easy, but is the only answer to end to the exploding homelessness and the population of families in our city and state. I applaud the House of Hope's efforts to provide safe, quality housing and services for people who need it the very most and those who have the least options. We all know that Deb Chasse and the House of Hope do what they say they're going to do, and that they're willing to work with the neighbors and alleviate the concerns of the neighborhood. Their high-quality work in housing, I believe, adds value to neighborhoods. We are in a crisis of homelessness. Eight units will make a difference. We need every single unit that we can develop. We could fill those up today and open up rooms and shelters for other homeless families. I respectfully ask that you approve this project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
do, and that they're willing to work with the neighbors and alleviate the concerns of the neighborhood. Their high-quality work in housing, I believe, adds value to neighborhoods. We are in a crisis of homelessness. Eight units will make a difference. We need every single unit we can develop. We could fill those up today and open up rooms and shelters for other homeless families. I respectfully ask that you approve this project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, planning board members, my name is Dan O'Connor, and I have been the president of the House of Hope Board of Directors for eight years and a board member for 10 years. I'm writing on behalf of the entire board to express our strong support for a building addition that will serve eight homeless families on our property of 35 Varnum Avenue. Many years ago, the House of Hope leadership embraced the creation of permanent housing as the single best antidote for homelessness. This proposed building is yet another expression of our commitment. House of Hope operates 39 units of permanent housing with properties on Salem Street, Lakeview Avenue, Pawtucket Street, and Smith Street. All but one of these properties were gut renovations of very distressed properties that were formerly operated as nonprofits. The property on Salem Street was a non-revenue-producing vacant lot, so none of the House of Hope properties were tax-paying when acquired. Today, all five buildings, each of the 39 units contributes to the well-being of its neighborhoods by being attractive, well-managed, and contributing to the cities of Lowell's tax base. There has never been a complaint lodged or concern communicated to me relative to the operation of these buildings. With respect to the proposed addition at 35 Varnum Avenue, the House of Hope remains committed to a high quality of management that has been our hallmark. In fact, promoting neighborhood stabilization is part of our mission. We urge you and your colleagues to approve the site plan and special permits required to construct an eight-unit apartment addition on property that is owned by the organization. The project will provide important benefits to the community by providing affordable housing with supportive services to eight formerly homeless families and aligns with a number of the priorities outlined in the city of Lowell's comprehensive master plan. I, as president of the House of Hope, and my associates on the board assure you that the same care, accountability, stewardship, and kindness will be shown to the building's occupants as well as for the property itself that has been a characteristic of House of Hope's entire property portfolio. We thank you for your attention and careful ruling on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor?
Could I submit that?
Sure. You can give it to Dylan, and we'll submit it into the record. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Connie Cogswell. I live at 128 Warren Street. I am privileged to be on the House of Hope board. I first got to know them when I was a housing consultant and worked with them to develop Smith Street, which is 17 permanent units, permanent units for formerly homeless families. And I guess what I keep catching in my head is, I keep saying "units," but they're homes. And I've also had the pleasure of meeting a lot of the children that live there, too. So House of Hope says what they mean, means what they say, and they do. They deliver. And been really impressed by how much they've been able to address the concerns of the community, the neighbors. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Anybody else like to speak in favor?
I would, if possible.
I'm sorry?
Good evening, Mr. --
Are you in favor, sir? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. My name is Jeff Bush, and I'm the president of Heritage Properties, a property management and development company that's been based in Lowell since our inception 44 years ago. I'm also a proud member of the House of Hope. As a board member, perhaps I'm a bit biased when I say that the community in Lowell is lucky to have an organization like the House of Hope operating within its borders and providing housing and services to some of our most vulnerable neighbors. It's not a secret that the current economic environment poses significant challenges for those seeking stable housing. Rising inflation and interest rates alongside historically low levels of supply in the market all present major hurdles to those in need of housing. While this problem is multifaceted, one of the solutions is to add supply to the existing housing stock. We need more housing built across all product types, from single-family homes to condos to apartments to shelters and transitional housing. The units, or as Connie says, the houses here, are just as important, and just as important, the services provided at this location of Varnum Ave are a win-win for the community, and I think we would be remiss to let this opportunity pass us by. Not only will these units increase the opportunity for families to move from shelter to a more permanent housing situation, but they'll do so in a location that already provides services that are needed by families in transition. My experience working in this wonderful seat tells me that reputation is everything. Most of the people in this room here tonight are so because they consider themselves long-term stakeholders in the city and community. House of Hope is also a longstanding organization within the city with an excellent reputation because of the dedication, purpose, and drive of their employees serving our most vulnerable neighbors. I would respectfully request that you support this project as proposed. They may continue to do the important work set forth in their mission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Janest. I am a resident on Clinton Avenue.
And my name's Orvin Ramos. I also live in Clinton Avenue 14.
We're here, we have been to the zoning meetings. We weren't aware of the previous meeting that you had with the House of Hope. Otherwise, we would have been present at that meeting. We're not against the project or against what they represent or the services they provide. We're against the location of this big project in a single-family zone. They wanted to place this multifamily dwelling. I really believe that if this was a nonprofit developer, for-profit, we wouldn't have maybe even made it this far. The number of variances were cut down, yes, but the fact that they had to do so many variances to even make this project happen. The land that they're talking about, yes, it's a good-sized lot, but from a personal view, my backyard abuts this. I ask you to come to my backyard, look in the, look where they want to build this, and it doesn't look that big. It's a small, it's a small neighborhood setting. We're already congested, and to add that much, that many more people and traffic is going to be a lot. I feel for these people that need homes and shelter, but I feel like maybe they could find another place for this project. It's just not appropriate setting for it. We actually walked the neighborhood, and we got over 100 signatures for people that were not, were not for the project, which were never even presented or acknowledged during the zoning. So unfortunately, we can't get all those people here. And tonight, a couple of my neighbors are unable to make it because of health and medical issues. But after we walked around, we had many discussions, and people were discouraged with other projects that I've gone through and feel like, you know, that we're not just being heard as a community.
And also, the other thing I would like to add is that when we went, we didn't find one, not one single neighbor who was for this. And we're not talking about, I understand they claim the things they said about there being other units comparable, but we're talking about, I actually live in one that's a two units, one on top of the other, but we're not talking about a two-unit home. We're talking about a three-story, eight-unit. You put those two side by side, that's enormous. That's three times. Excuse me, no, two, excuse me, four times. That's huge. That's huge. And I understand everybody here for it, they all have skin on the game. They're all either with the House of Hope or have some part to do with that. I've yet to find anybody who has nothing to do with that to say, "Yeah, this is awesome. This is great." And especially if they've driven by there, I mean, this is huge in a crowded place. And like she mentioned also, if it was a for-profit, we wouldn't be here because it would have never passed. About 500 feet away, where the Fio's Pizzeria used to be, that was burnt down apparently, he actually came before the zoning board to put a two-unit and was denied. And just because it's for-profit, and now because this is nonprofit, they're okay to build, again, something so huge?
Thank you very much.
My name is Kathy Slater, and I'm just the same, the same as them. I'm not against the House of Hope or anything, but I think that house is like way too big. You know what I mean? It's, the property really isn't that big. I mean, in what she wants to build there, it's just, I mean, the people over on Clinton Street ain't going to see the light anymore, you know, because the place is going to be towering over them. You know, like last time, she had a driveway going all the way around it, so now she knocked off one, but the picture is the same. She hasn't done anything different. Opened a doorway in the back there. You know, she's, it's just, it's way too big for that spot.
I'm sorry, can I have your name, Mia? I didn't catch you for a sec.
Kathy Slater.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Yes. My name is Tristan Haley-Case, and my husband, John Case, we're at 8 Clinton Ave. And we are so against this building. It's way too big. They're already there. It's crowded enough around here. I believe in my other neighbors, and we're trying to not do this.
Did we lose her, Dylan, or was she done? I couldn't tell. I faded towards the end.
I missed part of it, but I think --
I'm sorry?
I missed part of it, but I think she has finished.
I knew she started off saying that she was against it was too big, and then I caught the fade towards the end. Okay. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Ty. I am the treasurer of the Pawtucket Citizens Council. I am here to speak on behalf of the PCC leadership. The PCC stand with the neighbors of 35 Varnum Ave and strongly oppose the construction of an eight-unit multifamily in the backyard of 35 Varnum Ave. A worthy cause is not a valid reason to ignore planning and zoning regulations. This will be a precedent-setting decision which will affect other properties with large yards in the area. The next five houses in that row on Varnum Ave have lot sizes ranging from 22,000 square feet to 53,000 square feet. Varnum Ave, 35 Varnum Ave is 33,000 square feet. If this is allowed to move forward, other homeowners will be enticed to sell to the highest bidder, who will build other multifamily units that are on that part of Varnum Ave. Can the city guarantee us that this won't happen? And if House of Hope were to leave that area, what guarantees do we have that another nonprofit will move in and not a developer or a privately-owned landlord? We respectfully request that the planning board stand with the neighbors and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Alan Saber. I've lived at 33 Dunbar Avenue for my 63 years. I moved back into this neighborhood because at the time when I first bought my first house, I was only able to afford a two-family home, which I bought in a multifamily district. I lived in Yeeaka for 25 years, moved back home as soon as my mother and the estate was cleared. I purchased a house, and I'm seeing more and more of this happen all around me. Now, I've followed this going back to a PCC meeting months ago, when both the House of Hope and neighbors on Clinton Avenue spoke, in favor and in opposition. I've heard all sides of it. I sat and I watched. I didn't attend, but I sat and watched the zoning board meeting. I can't think of another project that came before the city department that had so many variances. Now, the variances are in place by the city. They didn't choose to have, to move a dumpster or a drainage spot or enlarge a driveway for a fire. They didn't, they didn't choose any of this. This is imposed by the city. These are part of the city's zoning laws. And I'm opposed to it based solely on the fact the city wants to put eight additional families on a single-family lot. I would like this board to do the job that is before them and deny this based on that reason only. I don't understand where it will stop. They will continue to move into these single-family neighborhoods. I think most of their other property are in multifamily neighborhoods. But I'm guessing if any one of these, any one of these developments were to be moved into somebody else's backyard, you'd hear the equal amount of opposition from those neighbors, not because of what they're providing. I don't have to tell you the type of work House of Hope does. You've heard it for three months now. And they do yeoman's work. However, if it doesn't stop here, I'm afraid of where it's going to go. It's just going to continue to move through these. You look at the city map, and there is a lot of green in Pawtucketville. I don't think we should be held, you know, at hostage for that reason and that reason only. We chose to live here. This young lady bought this house years ago, moved out of Boston. She was outpriced in Boston. She bought on a dead-end street, a nice, quiet street, and since she's lived there, McDonald's, which goes 24 hours a day, there's a bank there. They're going to move 15 units now onto this piece of property. I just don't think it's right. I think that, I think this subcommittee should look at it from a point of view, not that it's the House of Hope or a nonprofit, should look at somebody coming in to put multifamily, multifamilies on a single-family zone. I want to thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Okay, hearing none at this point in time. We'll turn the matter over to any questions the members may have.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, Mr. Fisher.
So, you know, I appreciate the site improvements that were made, and as it relates to site plan review, and one of the speakers related to the fact that, you described the runoff and what's being done to mitigate that. Well, that's requirement, that's a state requirement. You can't build without making sure there's not additional runoff than what's already existing on the site. I think you've certainly made some site improvements from the original petition, and that really site plan review is one item that you're coming before us. But when we look at the special permit, and you look at the criteria of the special permit, and this, you know, this petition is not a mandate or reflection on the House of Hope, the work that they do, or any of the nonprofits. I applaud the work that everybody does. But the criteria, and I'm just going to read the criteria, for 4.5.2 non-conforming uses. The board, in this particular case, it's the planning board because you're coming before us, the site plan refers to the zoning board of appeals, but may award a special permit to change a non-conforming use in accordance with this section, only if it determines that such change or extension should not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood, not to the city, not to the nonprofits, not to the homeless, to the neighborhood. And I can, if you don't live in our community, and you live in a single-family zone, and you brought this to your neighbors, and there was an eight-unit apartment building that was being proposed, I don't think it would be well-received. And when you look at the criteria that's set forth here, and then for, now, our agenda had just that special permit. I know the petition also included 4.5.3, same requirement, the same test that you have to, you have to pass. Is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? And so the challenge, you know, that was a big house. I've been in the house from the prior owner. And so these larger homes, we're seeing that throughout the city, nonprofits are purchasing them, and they're using them to provide the surface, a service. And that's, we run into this with the larger homes. We run into this with Catholic schools that -- We run into this with Catholic schools that closed. We had that incentive, but it was very contentious, but the idea was, we had an existing structure there. We have it with nursing homes. We had a small nursing home on Varnum Ave, similar thing, neighbors were opposed to something going in there. Once it's built, and then the intended use is no longer, has served its life in the building, and then the neighborhood is stuck with what's there. And, and it was mentioned, you know, the neighbors purchase, it's delicate, so I, you know, I, I was the chairman of the Pawtucket Citizens Council when we put together the Pawtucket Master Plan. I walked that neighborhood with city planners and recognized the delicate balance that lies there. And I know the petitioner did make an attempt to kind of support what they were producing to kind of give the argument for the special permit, but nowhere did they show an apartment building. And the abutting zones are the, the existing zone is traditional single-family, the abutting zone is a traditional two-family, and then you have the neighborhood business district. If you've walked down these streets, there's a delicate balance, and the expectation is that they bought there, they have a business district in front of them, but right behind them, they have a single-family residential zone. That, in any town, any community, that, your expectation is that you have a comfort level of what's going to be behind you. You know, we deal with conflicts all the time in the board when, and I don't like it, when they build residential homes in regional retail areas. We had that on Middlesex Street, where there's condos right next to a shopping plaza, and we deal with the conflicts all the time. But this was set up so you don't have those type of conflicts, yet we're going to, you know, the petitioner is looking to put an apartment building in the single-family zone. That's a challenge. I don't, I, I don't see where this is, this passes the test. As I look at that, it's, as it relates to the effect to the neighborhood, and I think that it clearly does not fit the development patterns. To the petitioner, do you have the square footage of the, of the proposed addition and the square footage of the existing home?
So I believe that, I believe the existing is 2,725, and the planned, including the existing plus the addition, would be 11,785.
11,000, sorry?
11,785.
Okay.
And that.
That would be the total, so if we just subtract the 2,000.
Correct.
So, so, you know, you're taking a, an old Victorian home that really fits in as you go along the boulevard, you have the Pawtucket Falls, and we start looking at how that kind of fades into the neighborhood and the type of home when you look at the streetscape that along there, and it fits in quite nicely. You look at the size of that home, and you're, you're building something that's almost four times larger, so.
What, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Just, so, when I look at, is, is the, the extension that you're looking here, is it detrimental? I can't see how you can't come to that conclusion in a single-family zone, and then, how many units do you currently have in the existing building?
So there's seven shelter beds in the existing building.
Okay. Are they broken as, down as units, or as you?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't say it's seven shelter, but seven, it's occupancy for seven shelter families.
Seven shelter families, so now you're going to be building for eight, so it'll be 15, basically a 15-unit apartment building?
Correct.
In a single-family zone. So I'm having some difficulty with that, right? Absolutely, sure.
So the emergency shelter, every family has one room, and they live congregantly in the, so it's not seven apartment buildings, it's seven bedrooms?
Yeah, and I think we're referring to as units. Is that correct? So seven units?
Yeah, units, bedrooms.
Yeah, 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 fair enough.
Just one quick point I want to make on the square footage.
Sure.
Is that, just even with planned addition, we would be within the, the maximum FAR in the zone?
Agreed, absolutely agreed. Yep, yep. And if you wanted to build a single-family home, you could build Xanadu up there. You absolutely could. Yep, yep. So I think that's, that's a concern I have, because obviously, if you vacated that site at some point, what do you think would replace it?
I, I think it would be developed with long-term use restrictions.
I, I understand, but again, from a zoning perspective, allowing that to be constructed, you know, there, there are sections within Pawtucketville, if you look at West Metal Road, there's, there's, Megan's house is in there now. There was an apartment building that was built 70s or 80s. I have no idea how it was built in a single-family zone. I have no idea, and it created a lot of problems with the reuse of that. So there, this challenges, that's the biggest challenge I have. I think from a site plan, I think there's been a tremendous amount of improvement on this site, and so applaud you for the efforts on that. I just, I, I question selecting this site to expand to the extent that you're looking to expand. So those are my concerns at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Ms. Galvin, any questions or comment?
Yeah, I've been back and forth on this one, and I did watch the October 3 meeting, so I've followed kind of the background on this. I guess, I, I was convinced by the presentation tonight, although I understand the neighbors' concerns, I was convinced that the scale of the development was appropriate for the site, given the contextual site review that the architect and the team did, just based on the surrounding neighborhood. Still kind of gathering my thoughts a little bit on this, but I think I'm generally in support of this project, and I appreciate the work that the team did to really address kind of the scale and massing of the development, really bring that down to reduce the overall volume of the property, and I think that it's appropriate for the site. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lockhart, I know we have you on Zoom. You have any comments?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Fisher with his concern regarding the density, if you will, of introducing a structure like this into that neighborhood. I'm not sure how, you know, solve that and sell that, but I am concerned about it. I do have a couple of more specific questions. One was regarding the stormwater report and where the applicant stands regarding that item.
The question is, do you have a stormwater report, Mr. Lockhart, inquiring about?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Planning Board Member. Yeah, so at the submission, we didn't have the geotech report. We designed it for the 100-year storm. The storm, the borings were done in late November, so we have the report on our previous experience. The approval was contingent upon DPW and engineering, so we plan to submit it to the engineering department.
Okay, so you've made good progress with it. One of the notes, in our notes that we received for this project was that, it states, "Many of the trees cut down on this property during construction will be replaced." Can somebody be more specific about that than looking at a project plan?
Thank you again. So you're correct, there, there are three trees on the northern property line abutting the McDonald's. So if you add up those calibers, there's a 24-inch, a 12-inch, and an 8-inch tree next to the existing structure, so that's 44 inches taking down. What we're proposing to put in, 34 additional trees, plus 50 abreviated along the property line, so that total is 194 inches. If you do the math, it's a five-to-one ratio that we're replacing to taking down.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Only one other thing, there are a number of, actually, three, six, eight comments from the engineering department that we were given. Have you, are you familiar with those, and are there any questions or concerns regarding satisfying those needs?
He's asking if you received the comments that we received from the engineering department, which came out in the memo on October 24th, that was sent to us by assistant planner.
Right.
At the very end, engineering comment, Varnum Ave, any area of the project is under jurisdiction of the state and therefore will require a permit for mass DOT before any work within the right of way. Contractor will need to apply for all city construction permits, including trench, sewer, water, and driveway. Engineering office must be contacted for all site inspections. This includes drainage, paving, water, and sewer services. Is there a stormwater report for this project? More details are needed for the previous pavers. The applicant must provide as bills with a professional engineering stamp after the project is completed. The city engineer's office must be provided with a final revised set of the site plans before the project goes before the board, and show the area that was used to calculate the usable open space on the site. So that was a question, Mr. Lockhart, if you have any comments or addressed any of those comments by the city engineer.
Yep, so those comments are all understood. I think there was some follow-up on the previous pavers. I think the question was, can they handle an H-20 loading without breaking? So we responded back to those questions. But all the other ones are for during and after construction inspections, and we have no issue with those. So in other words, we take no exceptions to the comments that the engineering department provided.
All right. All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'll pick up where we left off on the city engineer comments about the previous pavers. So we did receive report from the deputy chief, Robert Crabtree, from the fire department. He has concerns about the previous pavers in the driveway portion that is over the drain line. Would it be able to support our aerial ladder during operations? They need to support a 73,000 pounds at a bare minimum for the fire apparatus. So would the pavers support the 73,000 pounds at a bare minimum?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that, that's the comment that I was trying to get across. The, the pipes and the pavers are all designed and specified for H-20 loading, so that's when you take that weight for the specific fire truck that I mentioned earlier, break it down by the axle and the wheel, and it supports it. So that's how we responded.
Okay. So following up on that, which we did receive from the fire department, the sweep path analysis appears to show our apparatus being able to access the area. It is a tight squeeze and will require run-throughs, run-throughs with the crew once the project is complete. I would caution the builder to be careful as far as trees, light poles, and dramatic curbing, abutting of the driveway that may impede the apparatus. If the finished project does not meet the sweep path analyst, it will have to be altered so it does. Thank you. Do you have any response to that?
Yeah, correct. So I did receive those, and then we use those when we were laying out. They provided the turning radius, so we put that on the site, and it's tight, but there's plenty of room that it can come up, turn around, and go back. The only thing that may impact it are light poles and trees, but those are further back from the curb. So it's, it's pretty standard, once the pavement is in the building, they'll come up actually with the vehicle and the chief and work it, and we'll find out at that time. But the stamped plans that we submitted are specific to that vehicle and the provisions that they gave us.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if I have any other comments. I'm just looking quickly over the last comments that we received from the planning staff back in October. They did address the stormwater report that, which they have, but hasn't been approved yet by the water department. Let's see, what was the other condition? I think they mentioned something about lighting, but I think you said you submitted a lighting plan, or you've changed the lighting plan since you changed the new plans?
Yeah, there's a photometrics plan that shows the foot candles, the height of the poles, and the locations as part of the set.
Okay. The traffic engineer kind of deferred to the fire department, and the work must, must be in the public right of way. Will need approval from master, which the engineering has mentioned as well. Then most of the other comments were for the zoning board of appeals. Okay. So those are my comments that I can address. Any other board members have any further comments at this time? If not, so we need, what did I say? We need three votes, one being, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sorry, I, yeah. Want to come to the microphone? I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
I apologize.
That's okay.
My name is June Messina, and I'm one of the associate directors at House of Hope, and I just wanted to mention, there were several concerns regarding our presence with the property, owning the property, the length of time, if we were to sell it, et cetera. I just wanted to mention that the development of this type of low-income housing does require affordable housing restrictions on the deed of the property and the buildings. So, I mean, a building we put up 15 years ago, we still have 35 years to go on that deed restriction, and this property would likely have something in the vicinity of a 50-year affordable housing restriction. And the requirement would be that that is what is operated at that location. I just sort of wanted to mention that, since there was some concerns.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's awesome.
Anybody else have any further comments before I turn over to the board? Okay. So basically, we have three votes before us tonight. One would be the site plan and the two special permits. So I guess I'll start. In regard to the site plan, I believe it meets the criteria for the site plan. With the site plan, it has all the side yard requirements and meets all the other zoning requirements except for what was given to it by the zoning board of appeals. So under our site plan, I think it meets the requirement. So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. One being the final approval from the fire department, after they have a chance to get their, if the project is completed, to go up and make sure that their private apparatus can safely and adequately go through the site, to make sure it's covered for the health, the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Also, that the approval from the fire department and that the, what was it? The previous pavers are satisfactory and will hold up over the drain line. So that would be one matter from the fire department, well, basically two, to get up there with the truck, and the other one was the pavers. The other matter would be that the applicant will provide staff and a stormwater report with the final approval by the, by the water department, which is LRWWU. And another motion would be for the applicant will provide staff, the planning staff, that the lighting plan for their approval. The other matter would be that the applicant satisfy as their concern that that was addressed, which I read into the record a minute ago, minute ago, by the engineering department, which is the eight that listed, which is the stormwater, the pavers, the stamp, the final set of plans, the calculated open space, and they have to work this matter out, and make sure that the permits are included with the trench, water, and sewer. So I'll make a motion for the site plan with those conditions as outlined.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
So I have a motion for the site plan with, as outlined by the, with the conditions. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Richard, vote. So we have four in favor for the site plan with none against. So the site plan has been approved. Now, we need a vote on the special permit under 4.5.2 and 4.5.3. Let me just, give me one second here. That's dealing with the existing of the non-conforming use and the extension of a non-conforming use. Mr. Requested a board for the special permits under 4.5.2 and 4.5.3.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval of the special permits.
So we have a motion for approval for the special permit. Is that what you said, Richard?
Yes.
Okay. A motion for. A motion for approval for the special permit by Mr. Lockhart, which is out with the 4.5.2 or the 4.5.3, doesn't matter which one?
4.5.2.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Lockhart for the approval of the special permit in 4.5.2. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second by Ms. Gavin. All in favor, say aye.
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 In opposition?
Aye.
Aye. The motion does not carry, the special permit is denied. The special matter, we have a special permit under 4.5.3. And we have a motion on 4.5.3.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under 4.5.3.
A motion by Ms. Gavin to approve on this section 4.5.3. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
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 In opposition?
Aye.
Aye. The special permit does not carry. Therefore, the site plan has been approved, and the two special permits have been denied. Thank you, everybody, appreciate your time and effort.
Excuse me, may I be heard before the meeting concludes? I just want to draw to your attention that there's a recent statutory change regarding the voting threshold for special permits for developments of this sort. Are you guys aware of that? You are? So it's a simple majority that's required. I was a little unclear on the number of votes that were... So the chair, the chair is essentially the tiebreaker? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just comment on the first time for NEMCOG, we're actually at the end of this month going to have a strategic planning session. It's going to be held in Chelmsford. They'll be hosting it at the library, and it'll be the board members of NEMCOG with the management team from the agency. And I think it's just a good time for the agency to really look at the direction going forward, and especially with the leadership that had been there for so many years retiring. So actually looking forward to that, and I think that, hoping for some good things to come out of that agency as we deal with some of the regional issues. You know, even the agencies that were here this evening talking about some of the housing issues. You know, unfortunately, a lot of the area communities see Lowell as the solution for their housing issues. And it really needs to be a regional approach, and I'd love to see the regional agency take an active role in that. And it's going to take, I think, a change in the mindset of some of the towns. But, you know, I think, I think it becomes a little bit more of a challenge that can be solved if, in fact, we spread out the burden a little bit. So, yeah, we are an urban area, but I think, you know, I think it's a great opportunity. And there's other opportunities to take advantage of regionalization as we go forward. Climate resiliency is another one, to be honest with you, is something that's becoming a concern from a regional perspective. So looking forward to it, we'll be reporting on the progress with that. Also, February 1st at the seniors' center, there will be a session, the first public session, I believe, for the master plan update for the city of Lowell. I believe flyers went out on that, friends, and something else. So would encourage everybody that lives in the city that may be listening to this is to please, you know, go to those meetings. I did have some people reach out to me to ask to serve on the steering committee, but they're no longer adding members to the steering committee. So my, my answer to them was just be an active participant. That's going to really be important. So anyways, there's kind of updates on those two areas, and I think that's going to be big, because I think the master plan is going to set, the update of this master plan is going to set, be the template to set the tone for any zoning amendments that may come before this board. So I think people need to have an input at this stage, so. Two important things, thank you.
I just have one update, in case anyone's listening online or watching this later. I think I shared this at the last planning board meeting, but the Community Preservation Committee is beginning deliberation a week from today, on January 12th. So we're deliberating on a number of proposals and applications for the funding. So I just wanted to share that in case anyone wants to tune in. Thank you.
And the update to the historic board, our next meeting is Monday, January 9th, in the mayor's reception room. That's all.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made and...
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you have a vote yet?